Good evening. I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have four items on the agenda. The first is approval of minutes from our meeting on December 21st, 6:25 PM.
Motion approved.
Second. Do you have a motion on the floor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, we have permission to advertise C-21-01, Seventh Avenue Reconstruction, Walnut to Washington. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is to request permission to advertise for the reconstruction of Seventh Avenue from Walnut Street to Washington Street. The contract, work under the contract will include replacing old sanitary sewer with new PVC pipe, replacing water main pipes, storm sewer, and reconstructing the road from curb to curb with new pavement foundation and new pavement, concrete pavement on this section of road. The preliminary cost estimate for this project is $2,650,000, and we would use previously budgeted funds from Water Utility, Sewer Utility, and Pavement Maintenance Program to cover the cost of the project. In case of favorable action by the council, you have the following schedule in your memo where we would advertise for bids starting February 18th and anticipate construction between May and October.
Motion approved.
Second. Are there any questions for Max?
Yes.
Alderman Nellin.
Yes. Max, obviously, we got the design back from the successful bidder on the design portion of this. Is that available for public review and where?
No, we usually don't have the design plans available to public review. Right now, I just got back from them the 90% plans, so I still have to go through theirs and go through the contract book that they have revised after our comments, and I intend to do this this week. If you would like to have a look at the plans, I can certainly share those with you. I shared them with other departments, the utility departments, sewer and water, as well as Public Works, and the fire department, since we're going to be right in front of their door when we rebuild the road. But I can definitely share it with the council members if you want that.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Max, I do have one question. I had someone approach me, and they, regarding the retaining wall, I'm sure, I believe it's between Hickory, where that's going to be cut back. Are the public going to be able to get a look at what's going to happen there as far as retaining wall, what's going to be put there, or is that going to be in the future?
Typically, if the retaining walls are outside of the right-of-way, we would not be touching them. We're trying to reconstruct this road. The topography was a challenge, and we're trying to not add any retaining wall and to not modify any of the ones that exist there. I can take a closer look at the specific address and let you know, but I don't believe we would make any changes to the existing retaining walls in that area.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Max. Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
You said it was Hickory and, at Hickory, the retaining walls?
Yes.
I'll look into it. I'll send you an email.
Okay. Thank you. All right. If there are any questions, I have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, permission to advertise C-21-02, Maple Street Reconstruction, Main to Second Avenue.
Thank you. This is another item where we're asking for permission to advertise for a street reconstruction. This is Maple Street between Main and Second. In this street, we don't have water or sanitary sewer repairs, but we will work on the storm sewer and also road foundation and new pavement and new curb and gutter. The preliminary cost estimate for this project is $465,000, and we would use previously budgeted pavement maintenance program funds to cover the cost of this project. Assuming favorable action by the board and council, we plan on advertising for bids March 18th, and we anticipate construction between June and September.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have most on the floor. Any questions for Max on item number two, three? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, permission to advertise C-21-05, Meyer Street Reconstruction, Fair to Wilson.
Thank you again. This is my last item. It's another permission to advertise for a street reconstruction. This is Meyer Street between Fair Street and Wilson Street. It is similar to the Maple Street contract where we will repair storm sewer and reconstruct the road from curb to curb. The preliminary cost estimate for this project is $680,000, and we would use previously budgeted pavement maintenance program to cover the cost of this project. This project is on the same timeline as Maple Street, which is advertising mid-March and construction anticipated between June and September.
Motion approved.
Second. Any questions for Max on item number four? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Max. Be no further business before the Board of Public Works. I adjourn.
All right. And with that, I will now call to order the meeting of the Finance Committee. We have three items on the agenda this evening. First is the approval of minutes for the Finance Committee meeting on January 18th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Anybody have questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. That carries. Now, we have some item, agenda items for consideration. We have a resolution accepting donations to the West Bend Fire Department. Chief Kudak is here to tell us about those.
Yes, thank you. Yes, there's three of those in front of you, all under the same resolution. The first donation is a memorial in honor of Kenny Rheingans. He was a paid-on-call firefighter in the 1980s with the West Bend Fire Department, and his memory. Mr. and Mrs. Keith Caldwell donated $10 to the West Bend Fire Department. The second one is a donation of $300 from Mrs. Lori, and I'm going to blow this, but Lutzschwager, she sent me a nice note. She had not received our services in the last year or so, but she had a nice note in there, and it's, one of the lines that stuck out was "In gratitude for your faithful service." And the third, or the third donation is from Mr. Joseph Gresser, who is a proponent of our smoke detector program. He thoroughly, he works with Captain Aslan in installing these smoke detectors. He likes the program, and he donated $30 towards the program. The first two items will be put into Fire Department donations and then transferred into Supplies Account for Fire Department, so we can buy equipment with that, and the third one, the smoke detector one, will go into the account for Smoke Detector Program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion questions?
I'd just like to thank the people for their donations.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, thank you to everybody that donated to the Fire Department. They do a great job. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda item for consideration is number three, a resolution transferring Washington County funds for Bike Friendly Path, and Administrator Sean Bowe is going to talk to us about that.
So this is the process of freeing up the funds to install the Orange Loop that you previously approved at a council meeting. The $7,000 number that you see before you is a bit higher than the number that was included when Doug and I were talking about the cost of the signs and the paint. He felt more comfortable saying $7,000 in case the funds came, or the cost came in a bit more than what was anticipated from the quote. $7,000 seems fair to cover that. Bike Friendly is prepared to cover the full amount, whatever that might be, but we're asking to transfer the $7,000 so that it's available, so Doug can go ahead and order the signs, purchase the paint, install all of that fun stuff for the Orange Loop, and then, once it's completed, we'll know the exact cost of the materials that Bike Friendly has agreed to pay, and then we would invoice them, and they would cut a check back to the city and refund this account that we're tapping at this point. The number, some of, you might not know where this money came from, but it was all part of that agreement, which happens to be included in your agenda packet as well for the street vacation or Schmidt Road, but that's what, when Carrie refers to Washington County funds, that's what she's referring to, of those dollars that came along with that whole Schmidt Road, River Road, Ridge Run Park deal, intergovernmental agreement. Any questions? I can attempt to answer them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And with that, those are all the items on our agenda for the evening of Finance. I will adjourn.
And good evening. I'll call to order the City of West Bend Common Council Meeting for February 1st, 6:30. Notice that all aldermen are present and accounted for. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, a nation united and invincible, with a routine end of this world.
Thank you. I will note that we have 17 items on our agenda, with the first being Catholic Schools Week Proclamation. This proclamation reads, "Whereas Catholic schools across the nation are celebrating Catholic Schools Week from January 31st through February 6th, 2021, themed Catholic Schools' Faith, Excellence, Service. And whereas Catholic schools of the City of West Bend play a key role in educating students to better their future, these schools offer parents and students an alternate education opportunity. These organizations are dedicated to supporting parents, families, and preparing the youth for the roles in our community. And whereas, the common mission of Catholic schools is to provide students and families with a high-quality education which focuses on preparation as members of society. Local Catholic schools have educated thousands of students and taught characteristics of responsibility and respect to better individuals and build a stronger society. Now therefore, I, Kristoffy Jenkins, Mayor of the City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim January 31st through February 6th, 2021, to be Catholic Schools Week in the City of West Bend, and I encourage citizens to recognize Catholic schools for their education efforts and encourage students to learn to their fullest potential." I would like to recognize we have some families and teachers from Cabrini here as well, so thank you all for coming on out. And with that, I will move to item number two, which is a resolution honoring Battalion Chief John Sparts, and I will be looking for a motion on that.
Second.
I'll take Dolnick and Allen. All of the favor of approving the resolution, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this resolution so reads, "Whereas firefighters protect our lives, our families, and the economic life of our community from the threat of fire and hazards, they risk their lives to preserve the lives of others and to protect our property and resources from destruction. And whereas John Sparts has been a great asset to the Fire Department throughout his 25-year career with the City of West Bend, John was initially hired as an on-call firefighter on December 28th, 1988, and later hired as a full-time employee on January 4th, 1996. His experience grew in the department, leading him to various roles. John was promoted to motor pump operator in 1999, lieutenant in 2000, and battalion chief in 2005. And whereas during his career as a firefighter, John Sparts continued to further his education. In 2001, John completed his Bachelor of Science degree in fire science, and in 2014, he became certified as an executive fire officer. His ongoing education efforts were just a part of what helped John grow. And whereas, John Sparts is also President of the Washington County Historical Society and President of the Washington County Fire Investigators. Most recently, John has been involved in updating fire prevention codes. And therefore be resolved, the City of West Bend honors Battalion Chief John Sparts and expresses its deep appreciation for his 25 years of loyal, dedicated service." Come on up. I heard you had a few words to say, but let's give a round of applause.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody I've been able to work with, all the people, coworkers, council people, the Fire Prevention Board, the, I said the council already, media, everybody, especially our residents. It's been a pleasure to serve them, and I enjoyed it, and great career. Thank you.
With how active you are in the community, I'm sure this is not the last time we'll see you. Thanks, John. Thanks for coming out.
We'll see how that goes.
All right. And with that, I will move on to number three, approval of the minutes, the County Council Regular Meeting Minutes of January 18th.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Kennedy. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I'd like a motion to consent the agenda consisting of items four through eight.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Moll and Allen. Any questions on those? Seeing none, all those in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we'll move on to agenda items for consideration, number nine, ordinance repealing and recreating Chapter 5 of the municipal code entitled Fire Department and Fire Prevention, with a presentation by Chief Kudak.
Good evening. I'm just going to kick it off, and then I'm going to turn it over to my two prevention experts, and one of those is John. I'm not sure if you know, but John is retiring March 6th from the Fire Department, and he promised me he would get this done before he retired, so he's sneaking it in. So, good work, John. Basically, the reason for this is to remove language that's duplicated between city and state fire codes, review references to NFPA codes, remove any codes that are no longer current or cost-effective, reorganize sections to make the code clearer, remove language that was removed by Wisconsin Act 270, and review fire permit fees to cover today's expenses. The last time this had a rewrite was 2008. So with that, I am going to turn over to my two prevention experts, Battalion Chief Sparts and Captain Kenny Asland.
It was short-lived, wasn't it? We don't really have a presentation or anything. We were just here to be available if you have any questions or comments on the code. The reasons, pretty much the chief reiterated, why we went through and did this, 2008 was the last time they were done, and they, the language was, needed to be updated. And we wanted to basically clean the code up, make it easier to use at the city level, and we referenced it, whatever we could reference from the state level, we did. And we took it out of, we had some stuff in our code that was actually duplicated, so we could take that out. We can't be more restrictive than the state, so that's why we did this. The fees, again, we looked at the fees. The fire alarm permit fee, been a thorn in my side since we implemented it. We spend more time trying to chase it down than we made by it, so that was a business decision. The other thing with the codes or the permits is we tried to take into account our time. It isn't like we're trying to gouge anything, but we do need to account for the time the city spends on permits. And that's, we have the permit fee itself, which is the first part of that spreadsheet, and then the actual inspection fee. And if there's no inspection fee listed under the permit, it's because we don't need to do an inspection.
Thank you. I'll open up for a motion first, and then we'll turn to questions.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. Allen and Moll. And then, any questions? I'll go with John and then Mark.
Yeah, both you guys, I just got to compliment you. I spent some time going through that, and I was just amazed. I actually ended up being late for my doctor's appointment because I got so involved, but I tell you what, you guys did a fantastic job. That is a lot of work. I mean, you went through the entire section, and I can't believe how many hours you spent on it, so kudos to both of you guys for an outstanding job. That was fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman.
Yeah, I'll say my thanks for a fine rewrite. The question I have is regarding the fee schedule. That apparently drops through the cracks fairly easily. Would you recommend that we add some verbiage to the chapter to make a periodic review on normal state of affairs?
I don't think that's necessary. I know we watch it pretty regular on our end. We want to make sure it's fair. Even though, about four or five years ago, we did look at it, and it was fairly consistent yet. It was pretty good. We didn't really need to make a big change at that time, and with what was going on. The other thing, too, is we want to be business-friendly with the city, so we didn't really want to, the time wasn't right. It was during a recession, all that kind of stuff, so I don't think the language is really needed for that. I think as long as we take due diligence and keep watching it and come to you when we need to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Alderman Buschlik said, that this had to be painstaking and tedious, and I really appreciate you guys taking the time to do that.
You're welcome.
And any other comments or questions, or compliments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. And we'll move to 10, permission to advertise RFP, Fire Department Operations Staffing and Facilities Analysis, and we'll have Chief Kudak start us off.
Yes, if you remember, back in December, we had the presentation on Fire Department staffing and calls and those kind of things, and one of the things that came out of that PowerPoint presentation was what we thought was a need for a Fire Department analysis from an independent. So I come before you tonight with that document to send that out for bids, the RFP. Basically, the purpose of the study is to evaluate the Fire Department's current daily, citywide shift staffing levels, and evaluate the efficiency, effectiveness, and current and future needs of the department. You have the entire document in front of you in your packet. If there are any questions on the packet, otherwise, the timeline would be to get council approval tonight. March 5th is the deadline to submit the RFPs. March 15th, we would award the contract, and between June and July 15th, we would expect the final report due, 9220 days from the execution of the contract.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Moll and Allen. Any questions for the chief? Yes, sir.
I also think Steve Einhoff has a couple of comments, if we can have him come up.
Sure. Yeah, that's fine. Did you know you were going to have comments?
I guess.
Yep, you can come on up. And thank you for being a part of this process as well.
All right. Thank you for having me. Steve Einhoff, President, West Bend Professional Firefighters. I've been on board with doing this study from the get-go. I know Chief Kudak has reached out to me, and we've been in conversations, but in, simultaneously, I've reached out, from our union side, I've reached out to the IFF, and we have started a GIS study, which is basically the same thing that we're going to be doing with this RFP, but it's going to take out the city portion. It's just going to be a geographic study where it looks at the city, it looks at all our apparatus, it looks at our responses for the previous five years. We've already started that process, but like I said, been working with Chief Kudak from the start, but have a couple different vantage points to look at our situation moving forward. So that's the extent of my comments. If anybody has any questions, feel free to ask. I'll try to answer them. If not, reach out to me.
Okay. We'll take all the data we can get. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep. Alderman.
Chief, have you got an estimate on what you expect us to, the scope of this to be?
Pricewise? Pricewise?
Pricewise.
If I was a guessing man, somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000. It has a pretty extensive scope of work, but again, I do not do this kind of work, so I have no idea. I know of studies that have been done in similar areas. Again, the scope of work was different, but it's probably around that range.
You had planned on paying for that through fund within the department already, correct?
We haven't had that discussion yet. We were kind of waiting to see how we, what it came back as, and then we look at surplus funding, I believe.
So depending on how year-end comes in, Chief and I have had a conversation about hopefully funding it through there.
Sounds good. Anybody else? Alderman.
I assume, I think I talked to Jay about this, that council will get the review of these proposals, as well as the Fire Department, before we choose who's doing this, correct?
There would be, there's a committee that was outlined in the RFP, and then any recommendations from the committee would come to this board, would come back to council.
I didn't see the committee. Who's on the?
I have it here. I can do it from memory, I think.
All right, go ahead.
It's Chief, Deputy Chief, Steve Einhoff, President, and then Brett Burquest, Mayor, and myself.
Okay.
Yes, the final would still come to the council for approval.
Correct.
Anything else? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the permission to advertise, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, chief. And move on to item number 11, ordinance amending Section 1.50, Para 1 of the municipal code regarding membership of the Parks and Rec Commission. Ian.
This is just a simple ordinance correcting the membership in the Park and Rec Commission, returning it to what it was prior to Alderman Hugaster and Alderwoman Kennedy being on, both on the Park and Rec Commission.
Sounds good. I'll look for a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. I'll take Moll and Dolnick on that one. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. Moving on to 12, approve 14th amended agreement for the operation of the Bin Moraine Municipal Court. Jay.
This amendment adds the Town of Polk, the Town of Polk has made a request to the Bin Moraine Municipal Court to join. They have a very nominal number of citations that they anticipate issuing in any given year, but just from a process standpoint, would prefer it to go through the municipal court system. We do also have the Town of Trenton, already a member. The most recent amendment prior to this was 2011, I believe, when Mequon joined us, Mequon Thiensville before that, so there, it's a conglomeration of the municipalities that do a shared court system, and we elect a judge, and it's a good process. It's held right here, municipal court's held right here in this building. The committee that reviewed this after the request already approved it from a staffing level. I'm active in that Bin Moraine Municipal Court group, and then each municipality has to take action on this topic in order for it to pass as well. So this kind, this similar kind of agreement is taking place in all the municipalities that are already members. If there's more questions, I can attempt to answer them.
Will they, oh, sorry. Jay, will they pay part of the fee of the judges and things like that, then?
Yep, it'll be a real small percentage.
Right, I would imagine, but they would.
They will absolutely pay.
Contribute for becoming a part of it. Okay.
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Allen and Moll. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in, excuse me, all those in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. And then, number 13, resolution to vacate a portion of Schmidt Road from the north right-of-way line of East Washington Street to 400.7 feet south of the center, quarter corner of Section 12, T-11, NR-19E, and east-west right-of-way for an unnamed road east of Schmidt Road and the northern portion of Rolfs Avenue by the Development Department, City of West Bend. Jim.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm asking the council to consider the resolution for the vacation of Schmidt Road and that small portion of unnamed road. This is just the final resolution enacting this. This is part of the agreement that the city had with the county for the reconstruction of Rolfs Road to connect in there, and this is just the process to formally vacate that portion of roadway for them.
Sounds good. And I was told that there was a notice published for a public hearing, so we need to open that up first?
Correct.
Okay. Then this is a public hearing. If anybody from the public would like to speak up on this item, feel free to come on up. If not, I'm looking for a motion to end the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Dolnick and Allen. Now we'll open up if there's any questions from the council. If not, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Kayler and Moll. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And moving on to 14, resolution accepting various easements for utilities and stormwater drainage easements associated with the Rolfs Avenue extension construction and Schmidt Road Street Vacation. Jim, again.
Thank you. These are just various easements that we have out there for sanitary sewer and for water main, along with some stormwater easements that we needed for drainage from the Creek Road south. So we're just asking the council to formally agree to these and, and act on the approval of these.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Allen and Model. Any discussion or questions?
Are, are there any residential homes that are affected by the easement or is this mainly just county open park land?
No, this is all county lands, so it was old alignment that we had from previous and these are just retaining the easements for those utilities that are in place now.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And last up, 15, resolution to dedicate and name the Rolfs Avenue right-of-way for approximately 650 feet north of Lang Street and continuing west to Creek Road. Jim.
Thank you. So this is the actual formal approval for the actual right-of-way and naming that portion that was constructed. Everything exists out there, so everything has been constructed previously and this is just a formality to accept that dedication for that roadway and officially name it for our mapping.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Model and Allen. Any other questions for Jim? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Jim. And moving on to reports, number 16, a report by Alderman Burquest regarding the library board meeting. Take it away.
Thank you, sir. The last meeting of the library board was held on January 19th. The meeting started off with the introduction of the new library director, Steve Theory, and new board member, Josh McCutcheon. We discussed some information from the library director. It was his chance to provide some final statistics for the year 2020. One thing of note is the terms circs, which they use, it's a term that a library circles, refers to circulations, that's a number of checkouts that they have, books, magazines, et cetera. 2020 was a down year, obviously, but the fact that records show that it was only down 25%, they looked at that as a positive, that it could have been worse. So the fact that it was only down 25%, that was good news, given the totality of what happened. We moved on to the briefing on the recreation center, the basement renovation, which is nearing its end and as we speak, probably has been already. Remember, this meeting was on the 19th of January. There were still some issues with the HVAC system being installed and some delays with some flooring, but those should have been cleared. And we're looking forward to a tour of the facility once it opens. New business included, a discussion of the library close dates. Every year, we go through the calendar to see which dates the library was closed and most of those coincided with the city's calendar as far as days the city hall is closed. Of note was Good Friday, April 2nd, and the day after Thanksgiving, November 26th. The issue was brought up because usually when the facility is closed on like a Friday, then the next day, which would be a Saturday, was also closed, so it warranted some discussion. The, I guess that kind of solved, they talked a few things about some holding meetings at the school district office because the next date, February 16th, was, is a election, so we couldn't hold the meeting here or at the library, which is our intent, is to get back into their own building. So the discussion with the school district was to have the meetings at the school district conference room where we had been meeting for, the interviews for the library director. The next meeting is scheduled for February 16th.
Sounds great. Any questions for Alderman Burquest? If not, then we'll move on to 17, a report by Alderman Kennedy regarding the Park and Rec Commission meeting. Take it away.
Yep. We held the Park and Rec Commission meeting on Thursday, January 28th. We had a lot of great people attend and we also had a lot of great events approved at this meeting. We approved Music on Main, Wheels on Main, the farmer's market, a 5K kayak race, homegrown music, and the Regner Rocks concert series. And then we also got a great update on the Glacier Hills bike trail development and some cool stuff coming to that park in terms of being more bike-friendly for the mountain bikers. And lastly, we also approved a really cool bird sculpture. It's a metal bird. It's about eight feet tall and it's going to be put in the parks and should be a really cool kind of focus, focal piece for West Bend. Think a bird that's kind of like the bean in Chicago, like the kind of reflective and stuff like that. So that, that's kind of the summary.
Cool. Good stuff. Any questions for Alderman Kennedy? Almelo.
Yeah, the, the bird sculpture, as I understand it, is going on the Riverwalk West?
East.
It's going on the east side?
Yep.
East.
Okay. Do you know where?
Where the old covered bridge meets the east side of the river. The bridge that's not there anymore.
It's a bit of a perch right now. If you look at it, it's kind of a perky looking thing and the bird would go in the middle. They still have to do some engineering on the, on the topic and the sculpture group knows that. They've engaged in a structural engineer to figure that out in the floodplain permitting necessary for it.
Okay. And, and then the second question, there, we, we now have concert, two concert series every Thursday night for, you know, basically when it's not snow and ice. So we've got Music on Main and Regner Rocks. Was any thought given, did either, either group express a willingness to move to another night so that there wouldn't, just seems?
There was great discussion that night. The question was asked of Homegrown by Commissioner Jim White on if they were interested in any other night. And the founder of Homegrown said per their market research, their board, Thursday is the night they're interested in, and that was why they applied for that permit.
Sounds good. Any other questions for Alderman Kennedy? If not, I'll open up if there's any announcements. Yes, sir. Alderman, Kayla.
Just want to give a shout out to Doug Newman, Jesse, and all the Public Works Parks people, everybody who's been working on the snow. I know there's had a couple of tough ones here, so thanks to all those guys for doing a great job.
Amen. Thank you. Any other announcements? Alderman Bushlick?[1734.33]